We'll call to order this meeting of the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System Board of Trustees on March 7, 2025, approximately 10:00 a.m. in the Snodgrass Tower, Tennessee, Nashville, Tennessee, in the Nashville Room. We appreciate you being here today. I'm David Lillard, Tennessee State Treasurer and Chair of the Board of Trustees. The first item will be the, the second item rather than agenda, will be the roll call. Our Executive Secretary, the Director of the System, Jamie Wayman, CPA, will call the roll.
Thank you. Mr. Archer.
Here.
Mr. Barker.
Here.
Commissioner Bryson. Mr. Cox.
Here.
Mr. Ellis. Secretary Hargit.
Here.
Treasurer Lillard.
Here.
Director Long.
Here.
Ms. Maxwell.
Here.
Ms. Moore.
Here.
Comptroller Mumpower. Mr. Stanfield.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Mr. Wormsley.
Here.
And I am present as well. You have a quorum.
All right, the quorum is present. The next item is item number three on the agenda, the minutes of December 6, 2024. There any questions, comments, additions or deletions to the proposed minutes of December 6? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
I move.
I have a motion to the Secretary. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second, all right. Mr. Stanfield, any discussion on the matter? Seeing none, we'll just do this by voice votes as we don't have any remote members participating today. All those members in favor of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it and the minutes of December 6 are approved. All right, next item is item four on the agenda, the Board of Trustees Committee Reports. First one is number A there. The Administrative Committee, Mr. Wayman chairs that committee. You're recognized, Mr. Wayman.
Thank you, Treasurer. So this morning, we met in Conference Room E of the William Snodgrass Tower. We approved the minutes of the December 6, 2024 meeting. We had two entities that are seeking participation in TCRS effective April 1, 2025, that we'll present, we'll take up later in this meeting. We had an update related to legislation that's been introduced in the General Assembly that will, would impact TCRS. We then had a, an update on operations from both financial empowerment and TCRS staff, and that is the report of the Administrative Committee.
Any questions, Mr. Wayman, regard to the Administrative Committee Report? Seeing none, we'll go to item 4B, which is the Audit Committee Report. Honorable Mr. Mark Barker chairs that committee. Mr. Barker, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. The Audit Committee of the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System met this morning at 8:06 in the Room D of the third floor of the William Snodgrass Tower. First item on our agenda was to approve the minutes from the December 6 meeting, which we did. Then we reviewed the, quite a number of letters related to various parts of the Comptroller's Audit Opinion Letters that were provided. We reviewed the internal audit results. We looked at the internal audit projects tracker that keeps us up to date on the various projects that are going on. We didn't have any comments on the Comptroller's hotline. And then we got an update on the pension administration, the various overpayment questions, legislation and new laws that Jamie gave us that report. We had no public comment, and that's our report, Mr. Chairman.
All right, you've heard the report, Mr. Barker. Is there any questions, Mr. Barker, in regard to the report? Seeing none, thank you for that. All right, the next item is item 4C on our agenda, the Investment Committee Report. I chair that committee. The, your Investment Committee met at 9:00 a.m. this morning and approved one private equity transaction and also received reports regarding the system from the investment staff and also from representatives of our consultant, Verus Consulting, that you'll hear from here in a few minutes. So that was the report of the Investment Committee. Any questions about that? All right, seeing none, we'll move to the next item, which is item number five, political subdivisions seeking participation. Mr. Wayman, would you provide the report from the Administrative Committee on those items, items A and B?
Thank you, Treasurer. So, effective April 1, 2025, the Bangham Utility District of Putnam County and Jackson County is seeking participation in TCRS. They have selected to participate in what's referred to as the Legacy Pension Plan or the Regular Defined Benefit Plan. Their initial employer contribution rate will be 9% of payroll. The employees will contribute 2.5%. They are including cost of living adjustments, but they are excluding part-time employees from participation. There are a total of four employees in that, that are covered by that employer. Then on page 26 of your packet is the request by Bristol Bluff City Suburban Utility District of Sullivan County, also seeking participation into the TCRS Legacy Plan effective April 1, 2025. They have seven total employees. They are excluding part-time employees from coverage. They are including cost of living adjustments. Their initial employer contribution rate will be 6.9%, and the employee contribution rate will be 5%. The Administrative Committee meeting this morning requested that I make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees to approve participation in TCRS for these two entities effective April 1, 2025, and that is the motion I am making.
All right, you've heard the motion by Mr. Wayman. Is there a second? This, we'll take both of these items together, item 5A and 5B. All right, we have a second by Secretary Hargit. Any discussion on those matters or any questions? All right, seeing none, let's call the roll on this item. Mr. Secretary, if you would.
Mr. Archer.
Yes.
Mr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Secretary Hargit.
Aye.
Treasurer Lillard.
Aye.
Director Long.
Aye.
Ms. Maxwell.
Yes.
Ms. Moore. Mr. Stanfield.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Wormsley.
Aye.
And I vote ayes, so it's unanimous.
All right, so those two items, items 5A and 5B, the admission of those employer entities is approved. All right, next item is item number six, which is the Investment Report, and we'll recognize Mr. Mark Brubaker of Verus Consulting and have him introduce his associate and proceed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Treasurer. And good morning, everybody. I'm going to be fairly brief and then turn it over to Michael to give you a little bit more perspective on, on the markets. But I'm going to start here on, on slide four, and I'm really going to focus on the, the calendar year results in, in some of these broad asset classes. As you're probably well aware, a really strong year in 2024 for the U.S. equity markets. You can see the S&amp;P 500 was up 25% on a calendar year basis. But if you look underneath the hood there in, in the U.S. stock market, two very different markets, it was again, and this, I know I've said this in meetings past, but it has been dominated by the mega cap growth names, the magnificent seven names. So that S&amp;P 500 returned 25%. If you were to extract the magnificent seven names, those are the, the Nvidia's and the, and the Apples of the world, from that index, it made up over half of that return. If you extract those names, the S&amp;P 500 return would have been 11.8%. So, and that has been the trend for, for several years now with those stocks dominating. And you could see that if you look down at, at some of these sub-indexes, the Russell 1000 Growth Index, which is heavily skewed toward those types of names, was up 33.4%, while the Value Index was up only 14.4%. So dramatical performance of growth over value. You can also see that when you look at large-cap stocks relative to small-cap stocks. The Russell 2000 Index, which is about 2/3 of the way down that first list, was up only 11.5%. I mean, that's a good, good absolute return in and of itself, but relative to large-cap stocks, less than half of the return there. Likewise, and, and again, similar to the trend that's been in place for several years, international equity stocks underperform U.S. stocks by a fairly wide margin. If you look at the MSCI World XUSA Index, up 4.7% on a calendar year basis. Currency actually, the translation detracted over 10% from that return as the U.S. dollar strengthened throughout the year. And then you can see emerging markets were up 7.5%. I'll talk a little bit more about that as we go through your portfolio. And then finally, on the fixed income side, you can see that the Bloomberg Aggregate Index, which is the second one down, was up only 1.3% for the year. And if you look at the quarter, minus 3.1%. We had a big spike in yields during the fourth quarter, and, and that hurt fixed income returns over that time period. And then real estate at the bottom there, the, the REITs were up about 4.3% as we're starting to see at least a bottoming out and a recovery in the office segment of the market. If you take a look at your fund at year end, in the top right-hand side of that page, you can see that the, the fund ended the, the calendar year at 71.9 billion in total assets. And the asset allocation in that next table there, private equity remains over-allocated by about 2.6%. As I said in the Investment Committee meeting, though, that is pretty much standard for any, any mature private equity program among your peers. They tend to be over-allocated right now due to, due to the denominator effect. And, and so you can see there that the other asset class is slightly underweight. Everything's well within policy range, however. Here, as, as you look at the individual components, the total fund returned 9%, just over 9% for, for the calendar year, and that ranked in the top half of your peer group, so very strong. Also outperformed the Policy Index and the Allocation Index. So, a good performance across, across the board and across most asset classes. The one standout for the year, your U.S. equity portfolio, and you can see that, that's the third blue line down, returned 24.6% and ranked in the top 5% of your peers for U.S. equity. Very difficult environment for active management, and so that portfolio did quite well in that environment. The International Developed Markets Portfolio, it did underperform this year and ranked near the bottom of the peer group. Again, no concerns there. It was really a matter of the type of, you know, we have a lot of managers that are focused on quality growth, and quality growth did not work last year in international. I did want to talk a little bit about the emerging markets exposure. As you know, you, you have a number of restrictions and we don't have any, any exposure to China. That hurt the portfolio relative to peers this year as China rebounded strongly. However, if you look out longer term, and just if you look at that five-year number, your custom index is up 5.4% annualized over a five-year period. The standard index, which includes China, is up only 1.7% annualized over that time period. So, so that exclusion has helped you over the long term. I, I mentioned fixed income having, you know, having some headwinds due to rising yields and, and the fact that your U.S. fixed income portfolio tends to be longer duration structurally and by, by design, that was, was a hindrance or a headwind in 2024, and you can see the return was negative 1.4%. Real estate outperformed its benchmark by almost 5%. So even, even in a negative environment, I think the, the real estate portfolio is holding up much better than others. And you can see the longer-term results for real estate rank well within the top decile of the universe and ahead of the benchmark. And likewise with private equity and strategic lending. So when I look at it overall, your portfolio is working really well. All the component parts aren't going to work together at the same time, and that's really by design. And let's, I'm just going to go to one last slide to, to talk about it and not just look at return, but look at your, your return in, in combination with risk of the portfolio. And here, this universe, and I should mention, the universe that we look at your portfolio against every quarter is the, the public fund universe greater than 5 billion in total assets. So this compares your fund to, to those. And you can see there, that red block is, the red box is your portfolio. Return, as I mentioned already, above median, ranking in the top 38% on a five-year basis. And risk is right about at median. So looking at it on a risk-adjusted basis, your, your returns have been, have been quite strong, and, you know, we're overall very, very pleased with the results. And I will open it up for questions or leave it at that.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Brubaker? All right. Thank you very much for that good report, Mark. Michael, Brake Bill, CFA, our Chief Investment Officer, you're recognized.
Well, thank you, Treasurer. Let me see, I may have to have, let's see, there we go. And now how would I do the, make it the full screen? I forgot how to do this on a PDF.
I watched him while I go, and I'm still not sure.
Oh, there you go. Oh, yeah, yeah. Jamie Wayman, tech support. Thank you. Thank you all. Good to see you. Just a quick notes on, on some of the stuff I'm doing. We go through these every quarter and, and just kind of to update, we'll look at inflation, things we're seeing, growth, valuations, monetary policy, some oddball things we're seeing as the year is starting off and, and the portfolio as it looks now. When we went through the COVID years and then we had the massive stimulus, that's what caused the, the, the mountain on the bottom right of that chart, that is the growth rate or the rate of change of house prices essentially. And so house prices spiked, as we all know, and then that has come down. That was part of, of the inflation spike we saw during the pandemic, and we keep an eye on that for signs that it's, is inflation turning up or not. Right now, it looks mo, even though that little red line is turning up a little bit, it's very modest. The green line is inflation-adjusted. So inflation-adjusted home prices are just barely beating inflation is what that means. Goods, similarly, goods inflation has come off the bottom. We had the spike, similarly, housing. Then it kind of hit a bottom, but the numbers are still pretty low. So they're not on the bottom anymore, but they're pretty low right now. And so, so there's, you know, core PPI finished goods there, you know, is 2%, 2.2%. So really not a, not a big concern there. Employment, I have this chart, which is initial unemployment claims. Today, we had the monthly jobs number, which sadly came after I put these materials together. It was, I would say, kind of soft. It wasn't too soft, it wasn't too bad. There was a fear in the marketplace that it would be too soft, which would be a growth fear in opposite of inflation. So, so it's basically in line. What you see here is initial unemployment claims, and they've basically been in a range. The, the spike, again, is, is the pandemic where, you know, it just went off the chart. I think maybe there were 7 million or some huge number on that, so I just truncated that so you could see the rest of the graph. But you can see they're in a kind of tight range. There's not really a, if they were rising, that would show employment weakening, the jobs number weakening, and if it was going down, it would just show it's strengthening. So what we're seeing right now is job markets kind of staying as it is, maybe, maybe softening a little. However, on the Fed, Federal Reserve issued the beige, their beige book on economic activity on Wednesday, and I added this to last time, and I wanted to show you this update again. And I highlighted the, the thing in there where they said six districts, so Federal Reserve has, Federal Reserve districts, 12 districts, six had no change in economic activity, four had a little modest or moderate growth, and two had slight contractions. So out of the 12 Federal Reserve districts, eight of them had either zero or negative growth, and four had some growth. So that shows you the economy's not rocking along too, too strong right now. Another item I've been showing you is Evercore's weekly surveys. This is a survey they do where they ping business leaders in different industries and come back and create a, a real-time survey. You know, from, from their materials, they don't see where we are as a, even though it's declined, they don't see it as a, creating a growth risk, but they're, it's something to monitor, and we are. Now, on the other hand, there's another thing we watch called GDP Now. The Federal Reserve Bank of Atlanta has a real-time thing that's, it's called GDP Now, and they use incremental data that comes out in the marketplace, and it's purely a quantitative thing. The blue chip consensus there, the, the blue line is what estimates of, of economists are, and it shows the range, that's the blue band. The green line is the GDP Now estimate, and you can see it fell off the map. It's like negative 2.4%. And that does look scary. That just came out yesterday. However, there are some weird things in that, and maybe there are, there are some things we should watch, which is economic activity slowing, but then there are other things which are essentially just a calculation methodology thing that will make this number look worse and could potentially make the GDP figures for the quarter we're in look worse than they really are. And, and that's based on this. This chart here shows real goods imports and exports. Imports are on the top chart and exports are on the bottom. And what that's showing is that as we've had all of this discussion about tariffs, companies have responded to that by trying to get as much stuff here as possible and as short of my, time as they can to avoid tariffs. So that's why you see that huge spike, 24% increase year-to-year in imports. It's trying to fill up warehouses as quickly as possible to avoid tariffs. What does that do to GDP? Here's from the Federal Reserve Bank of St. Louis, and this is too busy of a chart from them, but basically this is the calculation of GDP. And it's C plus I plus G plus X minus M. And what does that mean? You have personal consumption, how we spend things. I is private investment, G is government spending, and then exports minus imports are the, the plug for GDP for the import-export market. So you can see, since imports is negative, X minus M, if that piece grows a lot, it causes GDP just mechanically to fall. So it doesn't necessarily mean economic activity in the United States is falling, it's just a calculation methodology issue. So there are some softening of indicators, but this is one of the key things that are driving it. So when you see news articles about how GDP has fallen off the map, part of it is just calculation. It's not actually activity. Moving on to valuations, valuations still are, I think, kind of pretty high on S&amp;P. This is something we've watched. The spike you see in 2020, this is median price of the median S&amp;P 500 company. The difference between now and the 2020 spike is that now it's based on good earnings. In 2020, PE spiked because earnings went away. So that's, it's not really truly comparable. So the thing we're in right now is more comparable to 2000, and you can see that sharp spike above 2000 in that period, and that was due to valuations rising as stocks went up even though you had earnings pretty good. So stock earnings are expensive. Yields, as I've mentioned before, still look pretty attractive. Credit spreads are tight, which is not a, it, it does give you some pause, but overall yields look okay. A monetary policy, we are on a Fed easing cycle. Easing is when the rates, short-term rates go down over time, and this, this graph shows you what has happened, and all those cycles that you see are, you know, things we've all lived with where the Fed was putting on the brakes, as, as an example, in that 2004 to 2006 timeframe, they were putting on the brakes as the economy was over-exuberant with investing money into housing, and then basically when rates hit five and a quarter, it pricked that bubble. We down, down to down, the GFC happened. Well, the period we've been has been one of the sharpest upticks in rates in history. Now we're on the downtick. Current forecasts for the year-end are that short rates will be 3.6%, which would be a nice thing to see. And then here's a, here's an oddball thing that I think was interesting. So we had all these like cross-currents of things that have occurred over the past, you know, six months and a year, and then one of the real near-term ones is, you know, there's the war in Ukraine and, and the administration and how the administration in Europe are kind of going different ways. European countries are talking about raising massive amounts of funds to fund their own defense efforts. Germany has announced programs in, depending upon what news article you hear, between $200 billion and $500 billion. As an example, I believe the U.S. defense budget is somewhere around $950 billion a year. So it's a lot of money. And since the first of the year, which is what this shows, this index or ETF of European aerospace and defense companies has raised, has, has grown 42%. So basically, there's been this massive uptick in European defense stocks as they look to kind of take over that effort, if you could, if you see that. And there are some particular stocks that are even well more than this. There's a European satellite company that, you know, it basically went from 1.5 euros to 6.5 euros based on this. So a massive return on that. So one of the very near-term things has been this movement in these European stocks based on that. And we talked about that in the Investment Committee meeting, which is the European Stocks calendar year-to-date, so since Jan, December 31st, have done really pretty well. So we're seeing a transition there. Portfolio, as of a couple of days ago, was $72.9 billion. It had been a little more, not quite a billion dollars more than that, and on February the 18th. So we've had about a 5.4% return. It was a little percent or two above that at one time. We've been tapping on the brakes a little bit, sold a little equity U.S. stocks, bought a little international, and then those have done well. So you see a little bit of overweight there, but they're still pretty modest overweights. And we are, we, we took some steps to bring the equity weighting down a little bit to make sure we weren't overweight, and then as markets have come off, that's made us a little tiny bit underweight as well. So, so you can see on the fixed income line down there, we, we're about $450 million, maybe, maybe more like 600 or 700 over at this current time. So, so a little, little defensive, but not, not hugely off of the standard target. So Treasurer, that is, that is what I have for the Investment Report, and look forward to any questions, and otherwise, it's been wonderful to see you and look forward to seeing you all soon, so.
Any questions for Mr. Brake Bill in regard to the Investment Report? All right, seeing none, thank you, Michael, for that excellent report. Okay, the next item is the item number seven on our agenda, which is the Actuarial Valuation Presentation on the Hybrid Plans, and we'll call on Mr. Justin Thacker, fellow of the Society of Actuaries from USI Consulting, to give that report. Make sure Mr. Thacker's microphone is turned on there, Jamie, while you're there.
I think we're on, right?
Are we on? Tap that thing and see if it's on. Yeah, I guess it's on, okay. Just speak loudly into it.
Yeah, I may be a few inches too tall for it. Okay, good morning, everybody. So I, I usually come a couple of times a year. First presentation is in the fall to talk about the Legacy Pension Plan results, and this presentation is specifically for the Hybrid Pension Plans. I know both presentations are very exciting. This one is probably the lesser exciting of the two, simply because the hybrid plan was designed for stability and guardrails were put in place on it so that it would be stable over the course of time, and it's functioning exactly the way it was intended. So the results that we have to talk about today are the expected results, given the fact that it was designed to be stable. But there's a couple of little patterns, a couple of little trends in there that I think are interesting that I'll, that I'll highlight. Also, I'll point out that these results are using participant data and asset data as of June 30, 2024. The, the work that we do for both the Legacy Plan and the Hybrid Plan, use that as our, as our benchmark each year, where we stop and collect the assets and the data. Quite a bit of time has passed, obviously, in the market since then, but we prioritize these with the Legacy Plan first in the fall and then these results today. And both plans have contribution rates that take effect July 1 of this year. So just the, the pattern of, of bringing results to this group. I've touched on most of this already. We'll talk a little bit about the financial health of the plan, which really correlates to the GASB reporting that we also produce for the plan, so I'll talk a little bit about that later in the presentation. Another interesting point, the Experience Study, we do every four years. It's where we take a look at the actual results that are occurring, whether that be through retirement rates, mortality rates, investment market returns. We stop every four years and take a look at those and decide if we want to adjust the assumptions. We're in the process of doing that study now. So at some point later this year, I think maybe in June, we'll come to you with some recommendations for any potential assumption changes. we'll come to you with some recommendations for any potential assumption changes. So I'd be looking forward to that. And then also, the, the system has historically performed an actuarial audit every 10 years. The last one was performed in 2020. And the requirements are that you do that at least every 10 years, although I believe there's a process underway to do that a little sooner, maybe even later this year. And that would be every five years going forward. So more to come on that at a later date as well. Couple of thoughts on the hybrid plan. It was, it was placed, it was put into effect July 1, 2014. So this report actually represents the 10-year anniversary of when the hybrid plan was created. So we now have 10 years of experience. We always talk about the plan being somewhat in its infancy in terms of growing through new hires. And you'll see on a couple of slides how that's progressing. It is still very small compared to the legacy plan. But effectively, what's happening is every new hire that the state has, both state, teacher, and judges, since July 1, 2014, is entering this hybrid plan. Every employee that was employed as of that date has remained in the legacy plan. But as people terminate or retire from the legacy plan, the new hires are going into this hybrid plan. So we'll, we'll see some progression of a few charts here in a moment. Quick high-level summary, we've got about 77,000 active employees in the hybrid plan, only 800 retirees. And that's because most of the people who started their careers after July 1, 2014, have, 14, have not yet reached retirement age. So we have a few retirees, 800 of them or so, at 2.5 million of annual payments. The hybrid plan assets have accumulated to 2.1 billion, which is a, a good-sized number. But looking at the next page as a comparison to the legacy plan, we have 2.1 billion in assets for the hybrid plan. We have 67 billion in assets. And again, these were as of June 30, 2024. A little bit different now, but significant difference still in the legacy plan versus the hybrid plan, even though we're 10 years in. You can see $3.4 billion in annual payments from the legacy plan compared to the 2.5 million in annual retiree payments in the hybrid plan. So still a very big difference in terms of comparing these two plans. I'll just, I won't go through this whole chart. This is in your presentation here, just for point of reference. This is, we have in here every year. But it's just a quick summary of the differences between the two plans. The, the benefit multiplier and the eligibility requirements are a little bit less on the hybrid plan. But in exchange for that, there's the 5% employer contribution to the defined contribution component of the plan, as well as a stabilization reserve that we'll talk about in a few moments. And then other cost controls that can be adopted if ever the volatility becomes to the point where it pushes our contribution rates outside of the desired range. So that's the design that was created back in 2014. This shows the progression of the active employees in the hybrid plan. You can see in 2015, it was the first year of new hires in the plan. We had about 5,000 employees hired in each estate. And the teacher groups, that doubled in 2016. And then each year, a similar progression has been added. So now we look at 2024, and we've got 40,000 teachers in the hybrid plan and 36,000 state employees in the hybrid plan. If you look at the next slide, this is the legacy plan over the same time period. And it's doing exactly what you would have expected in that as those active employees are retiring or terminating, they don't disappear, they're not being eliminated from the plan. They're moving into the retiree population with benefits that could be payable for another 30 or 40 years. But comparing the active populations, you can see how both plans are moving. And this slide puts them together. So legacy teacher being the blue line, hybrid teachers being the orange. We are almost at a crossover point where there's a very similar number of active employees in each plan. So 10 years in, that's where we are with the active totals. If we look at the state population, we crossed over a couple of years ago, actually. So now there are actually more hybrid state employees than there are legacy state employees. That's also not surprising, that teacher groups tend to have longer tenure. They tend to work more, they're more likely going to work until retirement. So there's a little bit less turnover. And there's a little bit more turnover in the state population. So there's, that hybrid plan is kicking up a little bit more, more quickly. So, but again, both of these are working as, as we would have expected. This chart can be a little bit deceiving because it looks like a really tall bar out to the right. But it's really just representing the 800 retirees, which if I scaled that to a similar scale as the other charts, they wouldn't even register. You wouldn't even see them at all. So, but we'll, we'll keep tracking the total retirees, and that number will also continue to grow for the hybrid plans. You can see in the bottom there, if you can see the bottom of that slide, the 800 or so retirees in total for the hybrid plan in comparison to the nearly 120,000 retirees in the various legacy plans. So just again, reemphasizing the, we're 10 years in, but it's still a fairly young plan. Assets is a big component of our contribution rate. So we, we've talked about this before, but we have a smoothing technique where we want to eliminate volatility in our calculations. We cannot eliminate, eliminate volatility in the investment markets, but we do want to manage that in terms of how we use those results. So we have a 10-year smoothing method. This chart shows the investment returns over the last 10 years as it reflects the hybrid plan. Actually, it's similar to the same investment results as the legacy plan because even though we talk about these two plans separately, they're all invested with the same investment policy and the same investment funds. But this chart shows each time we have a gain or a loss, and a gain means anything over our assumed return. So you can see in the top row what our assumption has been over the years. We've been lowering our assumed return assumption gradually. We're currently at 6.75% as an assumed annual return. So if you look at the 2024 results through June 30, '24, the fund returned a little over 10% compared to our 6.3, 6.75% assumption means we had a 3.3% gain. So we take that gain and spread that over 10 years in terms of recognizing that in our contribution rates. And that helps to smooth the volatility. As you can see, the early years of the hybrid plan, some of those returns could have been, would have been more meaningful in the legacy plan. But because the assets were so small, it didn't really register much of a gain or loss to identify. But the gains from 2021 were mostly offset by losses in 2022. So that's the whole purpose of this type of method, is we don't want to overreact to any large gains. We want to save some of that and then be able to offset it in, in the next few years following. So it's, again, these methods are working the way they're designed to work. This is the comparison of the actuarial value, the smoothed value that we use for our funding calculations. We really just show this chart because even though we are smoothing gains and losses over 10 years, we don't ever want to get too far away from the reality of what the true market value really is. And even though we're smoothing some gains and losses, we're using 98% of the assets on hand right now. So that's a good check there. And then another, another important point, and this, this has the potential to be a little confusing, but the, there's the concept of the stabilization reserve is an important component of the hybrid plan. We, we calculate a, it's called an ADC, an actuarially determined contribution rate. We come up with a rate, let's say it's around 3%. It's a little bit higher or lower than that for each group. Let's say that's 3%. The, the policy that the plan has created, the, the funding policy, has been to contribute 4% into the plan assets. And so anything over our recommended rate of 3% goes into a stabilization reserve account. And that's intended to be there to handle any future volatility that may come largely with investment returns, but any real actuarial assumption that we might have some volatility with. And so those extra funds were allowed to be counted in the TCRS funds for GASB reporting purposes up until June 30, 2018. Then there were some discussions and requirements that we needed to calculate those and separate those for purposes of GASB reporting. So now we have two sets of stabilization reserves that we're tracking. The rows at the top are the ones that represent stabilization reserve accounts that we are including in GASB reporting prior to June 30, 2018. And then down at the bottom, you'll see there's another 184, 189 million for each group that have been collected since June 30, 2018, that are not represented in the GASB reporting, but is still available for purposes of this funding process if it ever is necessary. So in total, the, the bottom row there, 266 million of reserves for the teacher group and 261 million in reserves for the state group that have, have, have been collected over the past 10 years, basically. When we calculate a contribution rate, this, this chart, I like to show just as a representation of what we're really doing. If we look at the total future projected benefits of everybody in the plan, it's those numbers at the top. Both state and teachers have the same benefit formula. The, the teacher group simply tends to provide a higher liability, even though that the benefit formulas are the same. For the reasons we talked about before, a teacher will tend to work through the system longer, will tend to stick around until retirement, which generates a higher pension benefit liability. Even though the benefit formulas are the same, historically, teachers have tended to live a little bit longer, which means the benefit payment will extend a little bit longer. And so those both translate into a slightly higher liability for the teachers. We see the same thing in the legacy plan. But we look at the assets at the gray section at the bottom. We anticipate future contributions from employees that will be added into the plan. And then we come up with this blue section at the top, which represents all future contributions that the state of Tennessee needs to contribute. We take a slice of that every year and make sure that we're keeping up with the growth of the benefit. And that's how we come up with the, the recommended contribution rate. Quick look at the funded status. This page is maybe a little less important simply because it's using our smoothed actuarial value of assets. It's not fully reflecting all the market value of assets that we have in order to maintain some stability in the contribution rates. I'm actually just going to skip over this page and go to the next page because it's the more relevant, the market value. This is the true value of assets that you have on hand, including the stabilization reserves up through June 30, 2018. So this is, this is what you see on the GASB reporting for the plan. You can see that the state employees, the far-right-hand column represents the 2024 funded status. The middle percentage is, is comparing that to last year. State employees are 99.1% funded. And if you look a little bit further down the, down the page, sorry, I know there's a lot of numbers on this page. The teachers are 106.5% funded. And if you actually add in the stabilization reserve account post-2018, it puts both of those numbers up closer to 120% funded. So even though we're not allowed to represent those accounts on the GASB disclosure, they're still there and they still are meaningful in terms of their impact on the overall funded status. So this, this slide shows our recommended contribution rate. Let's start by looking at the teacher rate. And this is actually the 2023 results from last year. The next slide will show you how it changes for 2024. But just establishing a baseline of where we are today. I mentioned earlier that the actuarially recommended contribution rate is around 3%. It was exactly 3% for the teacher group last year with a total contribution for the employer being at 4. So that means the 1% difference is going into the stabilization reserve. For the state employees, the calculation gets a little more complicated because the total 4% that's been budgeted has to capture state judges, a public safety officer, a bridge benefit, and then also the general state employees. So we weight those differently to, to get to our 4%. But the general state employee rate that would be most comparable to the teacher rate there is 2.73 last year versus a 3.93, which is the weighted average of the, those are the two numbers that you subtract to determine what you're contributing to the stabilization reserve. So if we look at how these numbers change with this year's results, again, starting, we'll, we'll start with the teacher row. I'll just flip back and forth. The 3% went to 2.99, so almost no change whatsoever to the teacher rates. And the general employee rate, the 2.73, went to 2.84. Also, just a little bit of variability in the state judges' rate, which went to 8.24. So relatively contained, no big surprises. There was a little bit of gains and losses that I'll talk about in a second as to where those came from. But like I said before, the plan was created 10 years ago with stability in mind, and, and that's exactly what has, has, has played out. This page summarizes how we got from one rate to the other, the, the points that I was making a few minutes ago. Really, the only line item that is material at all is the salary experience. Both groups have experienced salary increases that were a little bit more than what we had been assuming. Some of those were policies or programs designed for catch-up salary increases, not necessarily indicative of long-term patterns. A little more of an impact to the state group than the teacher group in terms of how it affected the actuarial valuation calculations. But all the other components of our gain and losses that we're monitoring were, were under control with minimal impact. As I said before, we're in the process of starting an experience study. So we're going to be looking at mortality rates. We'll be looking at the salary experience. We'll be looking at investment returns and making any decisions on how to approach that. Some of those things become challenging because when you're, when you're doing an experience study, you're looking in the rearview mirror, you're looking at what actually happened and trying to make assumptions about what you think will happen in the future. And the period of time that we're now studying, from 2020 to 2024, includes a couple of years of COVID mortality data that might not be relevant for us to use on an ongoing basis. And so we'll be trying to look at that, making some determinations for how we can utilize that information and decide whether or not it's useful at all, honestly, for making assumptions similar to salary experiences. If we see larger-than-normal salary increases for the past couple of years, that might not necessarily be indicative of what we want to assume for the future either. So it's part of what we look at when we do the experience study, and we'll, we'll talk about that in June. Last slide, and again, nothing new here, but the, the key drivers of these results will, will continue to be us monitoring assumptions and investment returns. And, and regardless of the investment allocation, regardless of all the attempts to keep things as stable as possible, we know that volatility occurs, and that's the types of things that we're looking for and trying to manage through the contribution rate. So we'll continue to monitor that with each year for the valuation. And that is all I have. It's a, I appreciate the opportunity to work with the TCRS staff. It's always such a great professional group, and it's an honor to serve the, the great state of Tennessee. So thank you for the opportunity to be here. Any questions?
Okay, any questions for Mr. Thacker about the actuarial report on the hybrid plans that he has presented? All right, seeing none, Justin, we want to thank you and your firm for your excellent work on behalf of the system as well and everything. All right, this is an action item, so we need a motion to approve the actuarial report and the rates, and the rates set forth therein. And we have motion by the Secretary and also a second by Mr. Barker. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Mr. Secretary, would you call the role in the motion to approve?
Mr. Archer. Mr. Barker. Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Secretary Hargit. Treasurer Lillard.
Aye.
Director Long. Ms. Maxwell. Ms. Moore. Mr. Stanfield.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Wormsley. I vote aye as well, unanimous approval.
All right, unanimous approval it is. Then the item is approved along with the rates set forth therein. Thank you very much, Mr. Thacker, for your excellent presentation. All right, okay. Now we'll move on to the next item, which is opportunity for public comment. Chair will ask if anyone has a public comment for the board today. Seeing none, let the record reflect that there is none. I ask if there's any other business here. We're on item number nine now. And seeing no other business, before we adjourn, I just want to note a few items for you. One is that we recently learned of the passing of Mr. Alfred Laney, longtime member of the Board of Trustees, who passed away on January 15, 2025, at age 82. Many of you remember Mr. Laney, he's quite a remarkable guy. He started work many years ago as a field auditor for the Department of Revenue and rose to being one of the principal and leaders of the department in Nashville and the leadership structure of the department. So he's quite an accomplished guy. He served for many years on the Board of Trustees, and we're greatly indebted to him for his service and on behalf of the Board of Trustees and also the staff of the Treasury Department. I've sent a card of condolences to his family and all on his passing. The other thing I'll note is that we have future meetings set forth, tentatively for June 6, 2025, and September 5, 2025. And finally, that we have board And finally, that we have board training. Yes, board training is back. So after this meeting is over in Conference Room D here in this building, just right down the hall here, see Bridget over here, and she'll be happy to guide you there. And it's your opportunity to learn more about fiduciary responsibilities of the TCRS Board of Trustees and receive one of the finest box lunches you'll ever see on earth. So you can look forward to that great experience of learning and eating there. And we also want to say that, that I thank each of you for your service to the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System and to the state. It's a lot of effort to come down for a quarterly in-person meeting in today's world, but we deeply appreciate it. It's essential to the operation of the system. And this is, our good board is one of the reasons that we have one of the best-funded and the best-managed and best-operated systems, state systems in the country. So I thank you for your efforts as members of the Board of Trustees. All right, is there anything else to come before the board today? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? I have a motion, Mr. Wormsley, is there a second? All right, with a second by Ms. Long. All right, we'll ask for a voice vote. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, we're adjourned. Thank you. Have a great weekend.